Good evening. I will call to order the Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting for January thirteenth.
It is thirteenth.
Yeah, looking at last week's, right?
Yep.
Twenty twenty-two. And with that, if you'll stand, Mike and Aliyah is in prayer, and Amy with the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day. Father God, we thank you for the blessings that you give us each day. Father God, just continue to be with us here in this town, this council, the planning commission, Father, to lead our town in the direction. Father God, just thank you for our first responders and all the people out there keeping us safe. Father, we just ask that you continue to lead God and direct us in all we do, in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike and Amy. Citizens' comments?
None tonight.
No comments at this time. Our next agenda item then will be approval of the minutes of the December second, twenty twenty-one meeting. Counselor of the meeting, agenda notes in order?
In order as before, Chairman.
All right. Commissioner, have we had a chance to review the notes? And if so, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a motion and second to approve? Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We are now on to new business. Our first item is zoning request. Matt Taylor, Talia Trace, one-two-four-nine-five, Old Nashville Highway, rezoning request, R-one, R-three, and C-two to PRD.
Yes, this is a rezoning request. It's several parcels of land kind of combined together and several zonings, R-one, R-three, and C-two, to be asked to be rezoned to a PRD. It's about thirty-seven point three-four acres, two-hundred-and-seventy-one units. It is a part of our Enn Springs overlay, in addition to the other zoning. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R-one, R-two, R-three, C-two, and the PRD that was approved at twenty-ninety Rocky Fork Road. Future land use plan for this area is kind of a mix of a couple different things, Old Nashville corridor, as well as the twenty-four gateway. Both of these character areas would support a higher density residential development such as is requested. The Old Nashville corridor would also support some commercial development on the eastern end of this development, in addition to the higher density residential. This proposed PRD, this has changed. There are no longer any live-work units in this. It is all just two-hundred-and-seventy-one total units of just conventional townhome units. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Old Nashville Highway as a minor arterial and Rocky Fork Road as a collector. An adequate right-of-way does exist for Old Nashville Highway and would be required as a part of this development for Rocky Fork Road. The plan also calls for a collector to connect Rocky Fork Road to Enn Springs Road West, and it has been shown on this plan. We did make a recommendation that at least a portion of the land along Old Nashville Highway be set aside for commercial use. They have requested, again, they looked at some live-work units, would maintain that they would prefer just to have this as an all-residential development. Again, our land use plan would support that, but it would also support the higher density residential. So you could, I think, either, that would be fine, as requested as well. But we do ask that at least be considered. We did also made a recommendation, number six, that the townhomes be a minimum of fourteen-hundred square feet in size, which is consistent with similar townhome projects that have been recently approved in the area. They're looking at about thirteen-hundred and up with an average. They said their average would be probably, would be larger than fourteen-hundred, but they had a thirteen-hundred square foot minimum. That's what they have requested. Again, we did recommend fourteen. Comments seven and eight are really kind of informational comments for them, just that we did look from our utilities department and our fire department. Number seven, that they would be required to loop the proposed water line to the twelve-inch line on Rocky Fork at Old Nashville Highway to ensure adequate fire flow, and that if any, number eight, if any of the dead end driveway to exceed a hundred-and-fifty feet there, we would have to have a turnaround. Number nine has been addressed regarding multiple male kiosks. They have shown those, they have labeled those, so we can remove that comment. Number ten, some of these units are, have no garages. Some of the units have single-car garages, some have two-car garages. We have made a recommendation that the driveways for any townhomes with a garage be at least eighteen feet wide. That's pretty consistent with what we have done on these types of developments, the last several that have come through, just to allow for, and many times those, the setbacks are only twenty feet. That gets you two spaces side by side for each unit. These are set back a little further. They are looking at more of a thirty-five-foot setback. So the door are longer driveway, but there's still no, there's no real way for them, anyone to turn around or anything like that. So if you have two cars in the driveway, there, one's behind the other, and it makes it a little bit more difficult, and it might lead to more feet people parking in the street to avoid, you know, blocking, you know, the wife in before she has to leave for work the next morning or whatever. So, so that's, we did recommend that they be eighteen feet wide, again, just as, to be consistent with what we have done on other, several other similar developments. We also did recommend additional brick or stone on the units, since this project does lie entirely within the Enn Springs Gateway Overlay District. And I think they've addressed that quite a bit, but there is, we did have one, if you look in the, on the book, it's page seventeen and page nineteen. Page seventeen is the, kind of the non-garage units, and page nineteen are the garage units. We had recommended to make the rear of those units kind of, maybe a little bit more consistency between the two. Again, the bottom of page nineteen is the garage units, the bottom of page seventeen. So it just, basically, it's just kind of that first floor on the rear of the units, and more brick or stone. And then, let's see, got a couple more. Comment number twelve is no longer applicable and can be removed, because they did remove those live-work units, and that was a comment regarding those, so we can remove that comment. Number thirteen again is just another informational comment regarding the landscaping plans. We'll have to look at those in detail at site plan review, but I didn't want, this will be required to meet the Enn Springs Overlay standards, not just our typical design review standards. And then, we did make a recommendation, number fourteen, for the, for the new public collector-level street that's going to be intersecting with Rocky Fork Road, to, they are, make a recommendation to create a left and a right turn lane from that road onto Rocky Fork Road, just to, eventually, that road would connect up to Enn Springs Road. And so we feel like that was important to, to have a left and a right turn coming out of there. And then, comment number fifteen can be removed again, because those live-work units have been removed from the project, so we can take that off. So really, as far as our recommendations, really, this comment fourteen, and then six, ten, and eleven are the ones that are recommendations that we are making, that we would recommend to the planning commission, either if, well, with the planning commission, if you do recommend approval, to put those in place as conditions of the approval. So I think that's all I've got. The applicants are here. If you have any questions, so then.
Do you know, in looking over the plan and kind of looking at this area, and then looking at some, I can think of one other area where we looked at a live-work. I just don't see that as an issue, and I don't see that as something that, that would really realistically happen.
Yeah, I mean, I, our thoughts were more along the lines of having like out parcel or two set aside for commercial, more so than live-work units. That was something they had talked about. We've had a few of those built in Smyrna, primarily, I think, in the Lennox Development. We've had a few that, and they have been somewhat utilized in that commercial residential mix. So, yeah, that's, I'm, I'm fine with what they're proposing.
Yeah, my thought would be if you're going to have another commercial-type development where you saw any retail or anything of substance, it would be at Old Nashville Highway and Enn Springs.
Certainly, I think that'll be, would, would develop first, for sure.
Yeah, and then, I know, we also still have the corner that's open here at, at Old Nashville and Rocky Fork, and that's been undeveloped since beginning of time, maybe?
I think there's a sewer issue, and those sewer on that lot right now. I think that's part of the issue there. I know there's been talk about bringing it over from the other side of Rocky Fork in the past, but no one's chose to do that yet.
Did this development generate a requirement for a traffic study at all?
It did. This is actually kind of the second iteration of this development. We had a submittal that the planning commission never deliberated or considered. There was actually was a smaller in some, one sense, because there's an additional parcel or part of a parcel of land that has been added to this request that's in front of you tonight. It only included the other, the three total or whole parcels, but it actually had, I think it was three-hundred or so apartments, and then about a hundred-and-fifteen or so townhomes was that development. There was a traffic study done for that development. That had not a lot of recommendations, but a couple of recommendations in it. We'd have not, with this being, you know, substantially fewer units, about a hundred-and-fifty fewer units or so, we didn't feel like it was necessary to do that again. That was done back in July or so.
Well, the density definitely has been reduced.
Right.
Did it look at anything as far as any type of decel lane on Old Nashville Highway, or did it feel like?
They did not. The only real recommendation from that study was to do some signal at the intersection of Old Nashville and Enn Springs, do some, a little bit of, not really even adding any capacity as far as any additional lanes or anything like that, just doing some changes to that signal timing and some things like that.
Which would allow for the spacing then to get in it.
Yeah, and basically adding a, like a right-turn signal head, so when the left turn, basically from Enn Springs, when the left turn from Enn Springs onto Old Nashville is on, that there be an additional right-turn signal head for the southbound lanes, so you could encourage some more right turns there. But that was really the only real recommendation from that study, as far as any improvements of any kind.
Other question?
Talking about the ten-foot-wide, single, single garage driveways, what have we been doing at other places?
Well, the double enough, wide enough for two.
Double wide, but how, how wide is that?
Some, some have been, really, we look at eighteen. Some of them have been twenty. It just kind of depends on what the developer wants to do on that, but.
I know we've got some developments in town, and I granted the, the setback is closer to the road, but you can't hardly get a full-size vehicle on a pad without hanging off onto the sidewalk.
Right.
So I'd like to make sure, if we can.
Yeah.
That we stay consistent. That's the main thing. We stay consistent with what we're doing.
And these are, do have a greater setback, so I don't think we would have that issue.
They're deeper, thirty-five foot, yeah.
So they're, so as far as hanging over the sidewalk, I don't think, yeah, they've got that on the two, they're showing it on the two-car, but only the, the single or nine-feet or so on the, the one-car garages.
I think what we want to be sure of is we don't have on-street parking starting to happen.
Right. I mean, these are all private streets, other than that collector that's coming off of Rocky Fork Road. That was our concern.
Have I overlooked the materials being used? I can't find it on their list. Is it, I know you mentioned brickstone. Is the rest hardy?
It, it is.
Okay.
I can't remember exactly what page it's on, but it is in there. I do remember a part of it. Exactly what states that. Page, well, page sixteen shows it was one place. And then again on page eighteen.
Okay, it was folded up?
Right.
Now, I think when we looked at this one time before, we had, we had an apartment request attached to this, and I think at least talking with the people who are interested in bringing this back, quickly discovered that's not something we really were going to be too fond of, from an apartment complex perspective. The, when I looked at the density here, it's seven-point-two-six per acre, which is really about half of R-six's value, so it's not as dense as an R-six would be. And only forty of them were surface parking. Is that two slots per unit, Matt?
Yes, yes.
Matt Taylor from SEC, yes, sir. We try to park those at at least two, somewhere between two and three per unit, yes, sir.
Okay. And I see you only have forty of those, right?
Yes, sir. We've tried to limit those, really turn that face toward Old Nashville Highway is where the biggest, the biggest pocket of them are, so that you, you get that front toward Old Nashville.
You don't happen to, just off the top of your head, and if you don't, it's okay, but you've got two-hundred-and-seventy-one that have garages. Do you know the breakdown on twos and ones?
That, I do not know off the top of my head. But I think that we have been trying to do, on a seven-unit building, there's about a, there's, I think there's four singles and three doubles, so roughly, you know, sixty-forty, fifty-five, forty-five split. And actually, I believe that we can go to the double car wide on the singles. That would not be a problem. Client said he already does that anyway, so that was just a oversight on our part, so.
This is something we've been asking on all of them, and I'd hate to, I'd hate to start doing something different, you know?
Yes, sir.
Just consistency matters here, so.
Yeah, we can, we can get that increased.
And your garages will be the thirty-five-foot setback, correct?
Yes, sir.
So you may have some elevation sitting in front of that, but the driveway depths will all be thirty-five feet?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay.
And I think enough room to park two cars behind, back-to-back, and then side-by-side.
Is it Oak Valley or something that's across from this on the other corner? It's, it's towns, right?
That's correct, yes.
Oak Village or something?
It's Oak Valley, in, in the corner there of Rocky Fork and Old Nashville, yes.
Yeah, and then, so you've got that, you've got the campground, the K O A campground that borders the back, the back part of this, too.
Matt, also, I was looking at the units that you were showing that were thirteen-oh-six as far as square footage. Those would be the ones that would be without garage, correct?
Yes, sir.
Would a majority of these, would they be the ones that would be fronting the highway, or?
So, yes, sir. So the, we got forty of those, and we've got, I think roughly half of those are fronting Old Nashville, and then we've got another small pocket that are down in the southwest corner next to Rocky Fork.
Okay. Which I think it would be our preference to have the front elevation facing garage or anything else. Other questions for the commission, for Matt or Kevin?
Issue with that, I think we just, maybe we've misunderstood the comment, but we traditionally do three, three lanes at all our intersections like that.
Okay.
So this sort, with, well.
Are similar to Lee Crossing. It's got an upgrade in materials, and it's got deeper setbacks, for sure. Yes, sir.
Better parking?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, and I don't even know if you can answer this question, but it's just for me to kind of understand. With home prices going the way they're going, are we seeing that? So that's a little concern we have for some of our residents here in Smyrna, you know, we're getting to.
We would agree. I think that's why we want to try to keep that thirteen-hundred option, because it is a more affordable price point. It's like this, gives people the opportunity to move up as they can afford more. They like the neighborhood. They can move up to the next, either a single or, or two-car garage as they mature in their life, in their career.
Why don't you just walk us through the neighborhood as far as the amenities that you have planned? I think that's a good segue.
Sir, so, we've, at both entrances off of Old Nashville, as well as off along both sides of all of our streets, whether it's public or private street, and then internally, we're going to have dog park and walking trails, even in some of the part of any neighborhood that is a little smaller lot size or attached type home. So those are very essential and very popular. Those just not, just not a very long period of use. And so the pavilions are very popular to have birthday parties or just cook out with your friends. So we found all those to be very, very usable amenities, and that's what we really were looking for here, was, you know, what are, what are people going to use? What's going to make them go out and develop new friends for the neighborhood? So it is a very walkable neighborhood. You can walk to these amenities within about five minutes at a.
Risk.
Well, I did notice, one of the most important things for me is that.
Yes, sir. Every development Old South does, they bring in a third party. Of course, Old South is very involved in their projects. Up until they sell the last home, they've seen that time and time again to be a successful model for them.
Any other questions for Matt?
Matt, I don't know if this is a question for you or Kevin. Is the neighborhood collector street, is that city, or is that private?
That would be public street, yes.
Public street. So the only way back out of there at another, I guess, this street showing kind of dead end into the property there, is that going to continue on at some point potentially for Enn Springs? And then the other two streets that are dead, they're private streets in there, right?
Yeah, those are, all the, all the streets are private, except that neighborhood collector.
So that's the only one that we could, the city could tie into, or, or could another developer tie into the back of that?
I mean, I think, and you certainly, I mean, they're setting those two up.
Right.
That there could be something, something there.
Okay.
That's something as a private street, there'd have to be some sort of agreement, probably.
Right.
Or maybe another phase of this development or something like that could happen, I guess. But, you know, the collector street would certainly, it would extend to Enn Springs when those adjoining tracks develop.
Okay. So with those being private streets, let's say another developer buys this property behind them, would they have to continue that private street?
We would probably try to make that happen.
Okay.
Yeah, to get, to get traffic.
So I know you go private, then you go back to city street, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we would certainly want, and probably end up being with extension of the private street, and you'd have to figure out maintenance and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
But.
Could be some confusion on where it start and stop.
Right.
And it will develop, it's just a matter of time, so.
Hey, Matt, one thing, I was, as far as Old Nashville Highway goes, are all of those towns forward-facing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I was looking at the elevation, and it appeared potentially to show a patio or something forward.
On the, the two buildings, the one on the very, the northern and the southernmost buildings are kind of, look to be flipped from the ones in the middle. So that is, that's.
Yeah, we, we want all of those to face toward Old Nashville right there.
Parking at the back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So they'll come in the back of there.
That was what was confusing me.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Kevin, can you tell me again about the fourteen-hundred square foot recommendation?
Yeah, that was what most of the, the other townhomes developments that we've had in this general area have had that fourteen-hundred. Some have been more than that, but the kind of fourteen-hundred is kind of the minimum we've had. And so we were just made that recommendation as being consistent with what the other folks have done. In reality, the majority of these units, based on what they're showing, are going to be larger than fourteen-hundred. There's some of those, no, some of the units without garages would be that thirteen-hundred minimum, the majority of them. So your average is going to be over fourteen-hundred, if you want to look at it that way.
But individually, it won't, some of them will be thirteen-oh-six.
Yeah, there's some of those no-garage units would be thirteen, yeah.
That's off thirteen-oh-six, oh, ninety-four square feet.
Right. Yeah, what, cost-wise, and I, I don't, I don't know the number of cost to add that hundred square feet or ninety-four square feet to get it to fourteen-hundred number, Matt?
So, I mean.
Is that going to put it out of people's price perspective?
I think, I don't remember the statistic. I'm sure Mr. Floyd could tell you, but with every ten-thousand dollars that you increase a home, you cut out, I don't know, it's like fifty thousand people out of the market or something. And so it's, you know, there's about twenty-two of those thirteen-hundred square, so it's not a.
Mainly on entrances, right?
What's the excuse?
It's mainly on the two entrances?
Yes, sir. And it's on the internal units. Every, the, the corner units are bigger, as with most townhomes. So, you know, it's not a big part of our plan, but it is nice to be able to offer that little more affordable home. You know, even if it's a, you know, twenty or thirty thousand dollar difference right there, it is, you know, it is important to try to hit that next notch down. That'd be, you know, a great first-time home for somebody, and that, that ten or twenty thousand dollars can make the difference for somebody.
Yeah, and that's why I was asking.
Yes, sir.
You know, what, what's that for another hundred square feet, what's it cost to add that to it? Because I know there's a lot of factors involved.
I know that, I had breakfast this morning, and we've got a townhouse project. This particular one was in Murfreesboro, and it was about two-hundred-and-thirty dollars for a square foot. And so if I'm doing my math right, that's, you know, about twenty-three thousand dollars. So you're cutting out, you know, I don't know how many people.
That's a difference if they were getting a house and not getting a house.
It is. You know, having to go rent an apartment or, or be, living here. So we prefer them to be able to start off here.
Well, one of the other things, too, is the design. So if you're doing a seven-pad layout, you, you don't want them all to look institutional right across the middle, right? So you want a break, and you want some setback. You, you want a different look, and makes it look better as a development. And I think I know from experience, that Old South has their plans drawn and tried and true and engineered, and cost-wise, I'm, I'm like you, Mike. I get concerned at two-hundred-and-thirty dollars a foot, what every foot costs somebody to purchase it. So I like the idea of mixing it and having some affordability in there.
I know, Kevin, you had mentioned about the brick, bringing a brick up on the other ones. Matt, do you think y'all would be okay with that?
So I was looking at the back, and I think, I think you were talking about the ones on page nineteen, right?
Yes.
And so I looked at those, and if I look at those, almost every garage building is backing up to another garage building, or it's backing up the landscape buffer. And so we just didn't see that there was a lot of value in adding that first floor, because, you know, you just don't, you spend some time on your patio, but, you know, you're not really back there to look at an arc. not really back there to look at an architectural feature. And so we're still using all hardy and cement board, and so it's still a good quality material. Raising that up, that, you know, another floor there, just, we didn't see a lot of value in that, because either the buffer's going to hide it, or you're just looking at the back of another unit.
And we had made that recommendation, just because this is a part of our gateway, and that's just something we had kind of said we wanted to have a little bit higher quality type of development. So that's, that was the only reason that we had made that recommendation.
Well, that's a valid reason to do so.
Yeah.
You will have six-foot back patio privacy fences as well?
Yes, sir. Yeah. And so, it's just not a, it's just not very, it's not visible...
Will they be vinyl fencing?
Excuse me?
Will they be vinyl style fencing?
Vinyl, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Kevin, for a little more clarity on the single-car garage, what was the recommendation on the width of those driveways?
That to be at least 18 feet wide.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll get that updated, we don't have a problem with that.
All right.
Eight, oh, 18, I guess it's showing the end units. And most of that's hardy as well, or cement board.
Yeah, and they do have on page 16, there's, they have some extra brick on those end units, and...
Plus the ones out facing...
Which page, page 13 kind of shows what units those would be on, either they're highlighted in yellow and in red.
Which would be your entrance?
Well, and those would be, those would be the ones that face, either they face that Neighborhood Collector, those ends facing the Neighborhood Collector, or the ends that are near Old Nashville Highway, you know?
And what we're doing there is we're trying to pick the places that are going to make the most impact, and so trying to be smart about where we spend money, that's all.
Other questions or comments?
Just looking at page 19, the back of these, will there be something that divides the patios between?
Yes, ma'am. There will be a fence that goes along the whole patio that runs kind of into the page, if you will, and then you'll also have one that completely encloses the patio. So they have a personal space outside where they have a grill, or where they use it for storage, or smoking spot, whatever they want to do with that, so...
And the HOA takes care of trash pickup?
Yes, sir. We've got a compactor back there, and so everybody has to haul it to the compactor, and that gets done on a weekly or bi-weekly basis.
And I'm not seeing your HVACs, but as from experience, I think they're all on the back patio, or are they not?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's a good reason to shield it. I mean, what you're doing to shield it with the privacy fencing and the, I like the end units being, having the brick sides to shield it that way.
So are we taking comment six off the table?
Well, I think the commission's going to decide whether or not they're going to make a minimum of 1,306 versus 1,400, would be my thought on that. Can you repeat that comment? I said, Amy asked on comment number six if we would remove the 1,400 square foot requirement, and my thought, based on the plan, if the commission was so inclined that they wouldn't take it off, they would modify that to a minimum of 1,306. Anything else for Matt?
Matt, on something like this, are there any places for bus pickup for kids?
So, if, I know at Lee Crossing, we did a dedicated bus pickup out front.
Right.
I don't know, we're happy to add one, but we've got good circulation in here, too. So I'm not, not really sure when that's asked for. Do you know, Kevin?
Well, in the past, the school board has said that they didn't want their buses leaving public railways. I know, because I've seen it, they do. So I don't know that that's a consistent policy, or if it's, maybe they've changed their policy. Because I've seen buses go off of public railways into some of these type, these townhome developments and whatnot. So that's the reason why we created a requirement of a bus stop, probably 15 years ago or so, because they, they said they weren't, didn't want to leave those. And sometimes you have, you know, the apartment developments that have the gated, the gates and all, and so they pick up at the gate or whatever. So, I mean, I think we, to me, what we've done in the past on these types of developments, these multifamily developments, is they have, we kind of work with the school board, and they, the transportation department kind of looks at it and kind of dictates somewhat either we need a bus stop, or we'll just drive through the neighborhood and pick them up at certain intersections or whatever.
And I think we've been doing that at site plan stage, seemingly, and so we're very happy to do that.
I just didn't want them stopping on Nashville Highway like they're currently doing, at the other, across the road, up on top of the hill. They stop on the middle, you know, out on Nashville Highway. So if there's a place that they could get in, get in and get back out, they could make a loop there.
Oh, yes.
You know, better than the Collector, but it being a private street, I didn't know what their rules were either, but if they came in there, they could make a loop and pick up and go right back out. That would be easy access for them, and may not need a cover, you know, place for the kids to be.
Well, if they're happy to drive back to the pavilion, you know, we'll have a, you know, kind of a makeshift if you want to. It won't be a bus shelter, but it will be a covered location for the children, so...
This is as good a place as any to get there for a bus.
Absolutely. It's very, very central to the neighborhood, so...
Is there, there's not one in that loop, is it, Matt? That's the male kiosk?
The, uh...
And amenity parking right there, but if you came in on, came in on one of the, one or the other road as you make that turn, where that parking is, that, that could be a place to pick them up, too.
So I think that the square box, it's not labeled, it should be, but that is a pavilion right in there where the kiosk?
Yes.
And you see that playground right in there, so...
Okay.
But that is where the pavilion is, so that would be a perfect spot.
Yeah, that would get them in, get them back out without the bus having to make a turnaround or anything.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Something to note for site?
Yes.
And that's in the center of the complex, too, so it's, if there are kids, they can all of them could possibly get there without the bus going any further.
Thank you.
Okay, some good discussion here. If there are no further questions or things to discuss, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'm going to try to do this, this motion, because there's a couple of details in here. So, motion to approve with ensuring that the front elevations are facing Old Nashville Highway and Rocky Fork Road, and making the minimum on number six at 1,306 square feet. Also clarifying that there are no live-work units. I know we talked about it, it just needs to be more clearly documented, and otherwise following staff comments.
Okay. So I have a motion from Tim as he's outlined. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries. We are on to our next item tonight, which is a preliminary plat, Oak Meadows, Lee Road, owner-developer John Burns, J.M. Burns LLC.
This is a preliminary plat, part of the Oak Meadows PRD. It's 32.69 acres, it's 95 lots. This is the entirety of this PRD, is all, they probably all went together at one time. It is on Lee Road. We had a few comments, several of them have been addressed. One of them was, they had a road name, one of the roads didn't have a name, we asked them to submit that name in the 911 approval. They did do that, however, there's a couple of the road names that were not on the list for 911 that they are showing, that they still need to clarify. So we would still need to kind of reword that comment, basically to provide approval for two of the road names, which is the, I think it's North Oak Chase and South Oak Chase Drive, I think, were the two. Number two, and two, three, and four, kind of some standard comments regarding signage and construction drawings are under still in review. Sewer, this will be served by the Oliver brand sewer main that the town is in, is constructing, so that would not be available until the summer, and they're well aware of that. Comment number five, we'd ask them to label some distance on some easements and property lines. That one has been addressed and can be removed. Comment number six regarding the critical lots being labeled, that has been done, it can be removed. Comment number seven regarding some of the minimum pad elevations, that has been addressed and can be removed. And then comment number eight, basically, that was, we had some concerns about some of the lots were going to be graded with leaving some steep slopes, and basically they labeled all those as critical lots, so they would all be addressed on an individual basis before they get their building permit. So we can remove that comment as well. Comment number nine, we just asked them to label, they're showing a roadway dedication along Lee Road. We just asked them to label that at least 30 feet from the center line to meet their thoroughfare plan, and then we need to keep that one. And then comment number 10, we'd ask them to provide their streetlight design layout plan. They're still working with Multicity Electric on that one. So again, comment number one, reworded, and then two, three, four, nine, and 10 would need to remain, and with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Kevin?
Kevin, our setbacks between the property lines, are they consistent there at seven and a half?
As far as consistent with, I guess, I don't know if I understand, they're consistent with the approved PRD.
Okay.
Maybe some instances where they're not, maybe some differences because of some drainage easements or something like that, maybe, on the sides and things like that. But they are 35-foot fronts, and then the seven-and-a-half-foot side setbacks, like we have talked about, that's, I can, that's, that was, it is consistent with what the PRD approval was.
Motion to approve, staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Preliminary plat is approved. Our next group under new business here is site plans, and we have Gwyn Farms Amenity Center, Dale Drive, owner-developer Lennar Homes of Tennessee.
This is an amenity center for the Gwyn Farms subdivision. The amenity center would, is being proposed to include a pavilion slash pool house with a pool and a playground. Entrance to this amenity area is proposed to be located off Dale Drive, which is that secondary axis off of Rock Springs Road. Vehicle use area for the site, 12,537 square feet, which would require 10% for landscaping of 1,254 square feet. They're proposing for over that at 1398 square feet. Total parking required is, total parking proposed, they have for 25 spaces, that is reduced from the previous plan we had submitted, they had to accommodate an extra handicap space in there, so the overall number of spaces did get reduced by one. So currently, they're proposing for 25 spaces, and with that, two handicap spaces are being required, and they are showing for those two as well. Landscape plan shows variety of shrubs planted around the pool, as well as the pavilion pool house. Additional shrubs are shown lining these parking lot with trees planted in landscape islands. As far as the pool house is concerned, the architectural elevations show a primary material of fiber cement board with base layer of brick, which does go around the entire bottom layer of the building. Couple standard comments, all to remain, as well as, we had two staff comments. One was regarding the apparatus turnaround for the fire truck. That comment has been addressed, and that can be removed. And then comment two, we asked them to add that additional handicap parking space based on ADA requirements, and they have done that as well, so both of those staff comments can be removed, and with that, staff would recommend approval with the remaining comments.
So it's like everything's been met, or it's consistent with what we've seen previously? Correct. Okay. Questions for staff?
Motion to approve, staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Tim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mike. Motion and second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Site plans approved. Next item under site plans is Will Scott, 326 Weekly Lane, owner-developer William Scotsman, and Mobile Mini Inc.
Yeah, this is, Will Scott Corporation is proposing for a 10,000-square-foot canopy structure to be built adjacent to the existing office units. There is an existing, five existing 100-foot by 80-foot concrete pads, which are currently used for trailers, with an additional pad poured, which with the canopy would cover. So the canopy would cover those five trailer parking that they currently have out there in addition to the one extra they plan on pouring. The site would not be visible from Weekly Lane. It's currently behind an existing warehouse facility on Weekly, but it's all part of the same parcel, so this entire property, if you hadn't drive, if you didn't drive back, you wouldn't know it existed, so not visible from Weekly Lane whatsoever. No additional landscaping is being proposed with this development, all that existing concrete essentially there already. Architectural elevations for this canopy structure show the entire building to be constructed using metal. This is allowed per the designer view due to the structure not being visible from Weekly Lane. Had a couple standard comments, all of which to remain, and we had no staff comments on this project. They have, they're meeting our criteria, so with that, staff would recommend approval with those standard comments.
Okay, any questions for Mitchell? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Amy. A motion and a second to approve. A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Need further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Our next item under site plans is Zomi Christian Church Incorporated, Eight Fifteen Rock Springs Road, owner, developer, Mojorlis Holdings LLC.
Zomi Christian Church owns the property, which is located Eight Fifteen Rock Springs Road. They're proposing to build two separate buildings as part of this development. The proposed worship hall would be ten thousand six hundred and eighty square feet, and the fellowship hall would be nine thousand two hundred and eighty-eight square feet. Uh, being the property is owned R3, the applicant did submit a request for religious facility within a residential district to the border zoning appeals and was approved back in February of twenty twenty-one. Uh, the one condition that was put in place as part of the border zoning appeals approval was that the landscape buffer be installed along the eastern property line, which does join another residential district, and they are showing for that as well. Two access points are proposed off Rock Springs Road, on, one on the eastern and western boundaries of the property. There is a TVA easement crossing perpendicular through the middle of the site, and due to this, it basically splits it more or less in half. So they are putting a, the two buildings and a small parking lot in the front part of the property that's divided by the TVA easement, and the rear half of the property is devoted to the drainage and larger parking lot, which would accommodate most of the people for this development. Vehicle use area for the site, eighty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet, ten percent for landscaping is eight thousand three hundred and ninety-four square feet. Applicants proposing for ten thousand five hundred square feet, meeting this requirement. Total parking is one hundred and sixty-eight spaces, they are showing for a hundred and seventy-eight. Handicap parking required of six, and they are showing for six as well. The landscape plan shows landscape buffer along that eastern property line boarding the residential lot, which was that requirement set in place by border zoning appeals. They also have some additional shrubbery planted on along that western property line. Shrubs and trees are proposed lining Rock Springs Road, as well as within landscape islands around the base of each building as well. As far as both these buildings are concerned, the architectural elevations fairly similar. It shows primary material of brick, as well as ephes. Designer view requires at least seventy-five percent of the building facade, which is visible from the public streets, be clad in a primary material, which would, in this case, be brick. Um, they have revised these architectural elevations since we've reviewed these in the past, and since packets have gone out a couple times. Um, they have revised it, the front building, which is the worship hall, we had a little bit of an issue with that, is too much ephes on it, they have corrected that, as well as the sides of that front building as well, we believe would be visible from Rock Springs Road, and they have adjusted those elevations to meet the seventy-five percent threshold on it. So, uh, everything being said, they are meeting our requirements for that designer view as far as the architectural character is concerned for the buildings. Just a couple standard comments, all of which to remain, and, and staff comments as well. Comment one was regarding those, uh, building elevations, they have met that requirement, so that comment can be removed. Comment two, extending a type A landscape buffer to the rear of the property line, and they have addressed that comment as well. Comment three was submitting construction plans for the utilities department. Comment four, another utility comment to provide documentation to the town of Smyrna for the proposed sanitary sewer easement connection on Old Nashville Highway. Five regarding the auto turn, previous submittal showed it crossing into a parking space, as well as over some curbing. That comment has been addressed and can be removed. Comment six was fire hydrant locations on the property, that comment once again has been addressed and can be removed. Comment four is a utilities comment for showing a domestic water service line. And then comment eight is regarding the installation of backwater valves, uh, locam on both sewer lines, and this is part of the codes requirement that will need to be met as part of the building submittal, building plan submittal for permits. So with that, comments one, two, five, and six have all been addressed and can be removed. We're left with three, four, seven, and eight. And with that, staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Questions for Mitchell?
I may have missed a detail. So on the, the front building, there were changes made to the percent of ephes.
Correct.
What about on the rear building?
The rear is staying the same as it was, it's not going to be visible from the roadway, so we're not concerned about that. It does meet the overall fifty percent for the entire building to be clad in the primary materials. Uh, it's still a high percentage of brick, but it doesn't meet that seventy-five percent as it would need to be if it was visible from the road.
But it does meet our designer review requirements.
Currently, yes.
What we had come before us before this, I don't remember, it seemed like it was a real challenging piece of property because it's so narrow. Was that a commercial product of some kind? It was next door?
I don't know if we've had anything.
Was it next door?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because the lines go across almost the middle of that property next door.
Yeah, the property next door.
What was it?
Has, was rezoned several years ago to commercial, and it recently sold at an auction, I think.
Yeah. I don't remember if this was the same parcel or not, but.
That, yeah, uh, that's a question I have. With the, I know this, the back building is close to the TVA lines, is there, I'm assuming they checked with Miltense Electric, TVA, to make sure they're within the parameters for putting a building.
Yeah, because you have that TVA easement.
Right.
Which was shown on the site plan, they're outside of that easement area.
But it is okay for parking lot?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Will there, or, I guess this is for commission, will there be any concerns about getting in and out here? Uh, you're coming right at that curve. I'm assuming it's better to have two, two entrance exit than it is just by having one on one side of the property?
That's the way that we looked at it, there are no driveways across the street or anything like that, so, um, you're not worried about conflicts there.
Yeah, there is one kind of to the right there of it, but it's.
There is to the right.
Yeah.
And we didn't, I don't know if Charles had looked at that or not, we, we really didn't look at that and, or have any concerns about that, no.
Okay. So there wouldn't be any need to put a decel lane or turnout or anything for people to pull out into traffic there?
Yeah, I mean, this is.
With that many people coming out, I know it's just part.
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe a Sunday, Wednesday, or if they're having something to church.
It probably won't be as, you know, the main traffic impact here is not going to be when Rock Springs Road is overloaded as it can be, you know, morning and evening during the weekday, so.
Are there any improvements? The city's looking at to improve Rock Springs, widen it, or?
I don't think we've got anything planned right there now, no, right now, not right now. We've done, we've looked at some things on the west side.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but we, not on this part of it, no.
Charles, I think I got a thumbs up that you're good with this, correct?
Because I know from the traffic light on Old Nashville Highway, you've got three lanes there behind, you know, home.
Well, we asked for a thirty-foot, uh, right-of-way dedication if we do come in there, and in the future, and plan to go to a three-lane section coming on up from Old Nashville Highway, we would have the right-of-way dedication.
Okay.
In place, so we'll look at it at, more at that time on, uh, improvements to Rock Springs, whether it be, uh, laneage or sidewalks.
Okay.
Thank you.
The current state, too, it looks like the site triangles are clear, and like you said, the, the time of use won't be during the high-impact time of that road, so it should be okay.
And nobody drives a speed limit down there.
Uh, no.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Amy? I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries. Kevin, I think that takes care of, uh, site plans, and we are now on to the January bond review report.
Yes, um, we have a few this month. Um, the first one is one that we actually looked at last month and, and deferred it, or just extended it one month. Uh, I still, I have, did cor, or correspond with Mr. Davis, the developer on that project. He has yet to provide me a, any real update. Um, I have asked for it three or four times, actually. Um, I would still recommend an extension here, I, I don't, I don't think we're ready to recommend that you call that quite yet. I do, I have, do have some concerns, I'm not going to lie about that, but I'm not ready to recommend that you make recommendations to the council that they call that quite yet.
When you say you're corresponding, we're sending a letter, of course.
Well, certainly we send letters. My correspondence has been, uh, I've been trying to email him because I don't, I couldn't find, I, I thought I had a phone number, and I couldn't find one, so I've been emailing, and he has been responding to my emails.
He has?
Uh, but every email, it's.
So he's still in business?
He's, yeah, my emails, the responses are, um, I was out of commission for a while, I had to have some surgery, I had to, I've been sick the last few weeks, so I haven't been able to, so that's the responses I'm getting, not providing a real update of what his plan of action is on finishing the work. Um, I can't, I hesitate to say I, I want to, I'm ready to call, because I, I want to, I always want to give the developer a chance to, to do what he's supposed to do, he or she is supposed to do.
Well, we're kind of getting into that timeframe as far as final toppings and whatnot, where weather is a big factor.
Yeah, right, and so that's why I would recommend six months, that gives him the spring to act. Um, you know, when we'd be looking, six months, that would be July, so we may be looking, in July, things may be, I'm, I'm, my recommendation may be different at that point, but.
When you next correspond with him, when you request a business address for him, um, and make sure that we have a, I guess, valid phone, and you may already have that, but.
Certainly, yeah.
You know, I think we're probably getting to the point where if we, you know, we get to this point in July, and we're still at square one, we probably need to be getting a little more formal with what we're doing.
Right. So that's, that's the first one there, Creakstone Village. Uh, Lee Bowman, um, there's just, we, basically, all we need is a, a corrected as-built, and this is really the end of the maintenance period, it did automatically renew back in December. We're ready to release that as soon as we get that revised as-built, um, so that would be our recommendation on that. Um, Woodmont Six A, um, I did, uh, since the packets went out, did hear from the developer on that one. Uh, in that timeframe, the, the roads have been paved, um, so I, my recommendation on that has changed, it would now be to reduce it to ten thousand and extend it one year as the maintenance bond. Um, the Antique Tower slash Echo Site Two, that's a, that was a, a requirement that was put on a tower approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals regarding paving a, a drive access back to a, a cell tower that was put in, built. Um, after that happened, or almost at the same time as that happened, uh, the Derby Run development was approved, and so, uh, once that development is completed, this road won't be necessary anymore. Uh, that is under development currently, um, so would recommend keeping that just for one more year until, and that, that, once that gets done. They will have to build a short road from the, that interior street, um, so we still want to have that bond, make sure that happens, but, um, so would recommend a one-year extension on that one. Uh, Hunter's Point Annex, Section Three, Phase One, uh, did talk to that developer, they're, they're, uh, they're working on Phase Two, and basically with that construction, they're going to finish up that, what's left in that pond that needs to be cleaned up and all. Um, so we would recommend extension just, uh, for one year as the maintenance bond on that one. Uh, Cedar Hills, Section Two, Phase One, that one's, is, uh, is nearing completion, uh, we would recommend, uh, the, uh, just a reduction on that one to ten thousand and to extend it one year as the maintenance bond. And that's what we got.
Okay, um, does anybody have any, uh, questions or comments concerning the bond review report?
I give you a motion to approve the bond review.
Thank you, I have a motion to approve the bond review report, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Motion and a second to approve the bond review report, uh, for the discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries. Staff comments and/or other business?
I don't have anything else.
Is there anything from staff out in the audience? Anything from the commission? We stand adjourned.